Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. At this time I'd like to call the meeting to order. You could please stand for the pledge of allegiance. And I'm gonna ask Mr. Sean Hatch to lead us in the process. Are we ready? Let's go.
Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And will Councilor Phil Curran please lead us in?
During this month of February, the time we remember past presidents, we gather to do the work of city governors. In 1941, President Roosevelt urged the people of America to make secure the four essential human freedoms: the freedom of speech and expression everywhere in the world; the freedom of waltz and worship God in his own way anywhere in the world; the freedom from want and economic understanding, which will secure healthy peace-time life for all everywhere in the world; fourth, the freedom from fear, so that no nation will be in a position to commit an act of physical aggression against any neighbor anywhere in the world. Tonight, this is our prayer. As our country continues to face increasing demands and challenges, we rely on God's merciful providence to protect our families who are struggling financially, to protect our servicemen and women, and guide us to do what is right for the people of Danbury.
Thank you, Councilor. Will the Legislative Assistant please call the law?
Curran?
Here.
Danan?
Here.
Nap?
Here.
Levy?
Here.
Ebert?
Here.
Stanley?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Cola?
President.
Ellis?
Here.
Cabo?
President.
Sadi?
President.
Visconti?
President.
Wetmore?
President.
Nero?
Here.
Perkins?
President.
Sheenies?
President.
Patello?
Here.
And Tysholz?
President.
Okay, there being eighteen present, we have one vacancy and two absent. Mr. Taylor is still battling the cold. He was possibly leaving the late at night meeting, but he wasn't sure. And then we have, Mr. Takola had a death in her family. Certainly, our thoughts impervious to him as he manages a very critical situation. The first thirty minutes of each meeting are reserved for public speaking. And at this time, I'll ask if there are any members of the public at risk to address the council. A reminder, you must be a resident and or a taxpayer of the city of Danbury to address the council. With that, I'll just quickly leave you now.
I'm Margaret Mitchell. My family owns property at the place in Main Street. We are taxpayers. I came somewhat prematurely to talk about number eight of McLean House on number twenty-five, Old Ridgeberry Road, under agenda. I asked previously if Old Ridgeberry Road, thirteen acres, was enough for a school site, because we keep hearing about the stress the schools are under. I know you're under great stress, and you're trying to do what you can to balance the budget and taxes down. So I understand you're looking at all those cost to this time. Number eight, I came for Jean Brock. If you don't know Jean Brock, Jean was a delightful lady. She lived into her late nineties, and she was a descendant of the McLean family. The Wick House at thirteen Main Street was the McLean house. It had a sign on it that told you the history of this house when I was a child. And John McLean was the commissary head for the American Revolution. So therefore, when the bridge came and burned Danbury, his house and all of his properties were something that they took out. He came again after weathered wet, so that he wouldn't be burnt personally. And he came back to Danbury after the hostilities had invaded, and he built the house that is now thirteen Main Street and with his commusing. I own a couple old houses, and I very simply believe the fact that old houses are money pit. They're very difficult to maintain, especially when you're trying to use them for something for children. But the historic significance of the house to me is great. We wouldn't have had an American Revolution without people like John McLean. He was the largest lost person of the war. He lost $12,000, which from the burning was a very large amount of money. I know that you'll have a public hearing, but I expect to be out of town. So for Jean Brock and for myself, I wanted to mention this now. It seemed like inappropriate time because it is on your agenda. But I have other reservations, but I haven't gone and researched when the driveway comes from South Street School. Then it runs along the side of thirteen Main Street, the Wick House. I don't know if that's a way of passage way, or if you'd be selling that with the house. But that's what makes the school function as far as parents coming in on South Street and driving around and going out on Main Street to pick up very small children. They can't really pick up children out of the curb on South Street. It's not a safe situation. So that's the second consideration I have about that house, that you look into how that driveway is gonna function, whether you're trying to be selling the driveway or it's already permanently under control. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Mitchell. Any other members of the public who wish to address the council this evening? Good to see our city treasurer, Mr. Johnny Yett. Mrs. Sotero?
Good evening, Council. My name is Senator Sotero. I'm a property owner of the city of Danbury. This is on item six twelve thirty. I rise tonight to discuss three agenda items, number seventeen, eighteen, and twenty-seven. I'll address item number twenty-seven of the department reports first. Last month, I spoke at the council meeting and asked that the Public Utilities Department include in their monthly report a historical list of the fire hydrants that are not working throughout the city. At that time, there were well over one hundred fire hydrants not working. Apparently, the city does not agree with the lists of non-working fire hydrants as something that the citizens should be concerned with. I disagree. In responding to my request last month, Fire Chief Harold used terminology at the meeting such as "critical" and "non-critical" hydrants. He additionally said that the fire department would be concerned if two hydrants in a row were not working, and that basically was what would constitute a critical situation. I disagree. As homeowners, most citizens feel that the fire hydrant that's in front of your house is the most critical fire hydrant. I think we have that feeling. The chief indicated that he saw little reason that the public would need such a list. Again, I disagree. I make my case by showing one instance where at least two high-flow fire hydrants have been out of service for many months. To make that situation worse, the area is an industrial area as well as a densely populated area of Danbury. A crowded nightclub, an auto body shop with flammable paint, and a Metro North passenger lane passes through this area. Very tight area with a high concentration of problem. This is one example of safety falling into cracks, and for that reason, I maintain that the taxpayers of Danbury should be concerned with and have ready access to the status of fire hydrants in the neighborhood. I think an extra set of eyes is a good thing. We, nobody's perfect. Fire chief's not perfect. The water department's not perfect. By monitoring this, it's something that people can do and to protect their neighborhood. It's also, one must not forget that fire hydrants are part of your insurance rates. If you've had a fire hydrant in your neighborhood that hasn't been working, you're going to possibly have insurance rates that could be raised. We all remember the question that when we fill out our applications for homeowners' insurance, it says, "Are you within five hundred feet of a fire hydrant?" If there's no fire hydrant working near your house and you're more than five hundred feet, are you indeed near a fire hydrant that's working within five hundred feet? I additionally wish to speak on item eighteen, the airport beacon project. Apparently, that's a grant that's being sought after by the city in regards to the rehabilitation of the existing beacons. Some three months ago, on October seventeenth, a fatal air crash occurred on approach to the Danbury Airport. The plane landed in a residential yard inches from a home on Worcester Heights. I personally observed that plane flying low over my house just one minute before the crash. The plane collided with the beacon tower on Harvard Road, causing the red beacon light to be destroyed. The tower still stands. It is difficult to understand why the light is still not fixed. One hundred-foot tower stands straight in the night, total darkness. And it's also one of the highest points in the city, and it's a difficult navigation to come into that airport to land. Changing gears, I wish to address number seventeen, the FEMA multi-hazard mitigation plan. This plan encourages the community to deal with disasters such as floods. In 1955, a flood devastated downtown Danbury. The government's Army Corps of Engineers, in response to that disaster, designed and built the Still River Flood Control Channel through downtown Danbury, thus saving from disaster downtown area. With that federal grant project came a mandated by law commitment by the city to keep the river channel basically in the same pristine condition it was given to the city back in the, I believe it was the late nineteen sixties. Some five years ago, the Army Corps of Engineers inspected the channel along with Highway Superintendent Duke Hart, and cautioned the city to pay attention to the vegetation growing in portions of the channel. The river channel is now overgrown by many numerous trees, weeds, and other vegetation. The channel at Casper Street and Triana Streets are in deplorable condition. The sewer and utility pipes under Triana Street Bridge are covered in vines and overgrowth. This will cause a problem with our sewer lines, undoubtedly. In light of the mild winter, it's beyond me as to why the forestry department could not have chipped away at some of the clearing of that channel. It's also beyond me as to why the town council as a whole, I believe, is the committee of a whole in regards to the flood committee in Danbury. And that's something I think you all should take a look at. I have a feeling that when the Army Corps of Engineers makes its next inspection, it will be a highly negative report, and Danbury could be at risk of having flood insurance suspended by FEMA. This has happened in the town before. I truly question why our infrastructure is in such disrepair. I think we can do better. I know it's a tough budget time. I know Mr. Hydrol's troops work hard, but somehow I think we have to have focus on safety issues, and these are big safety issues. If that channel gets blocked by a tree, we've already seen what one small blockage did at the police department this past fall, where the police department was just about inundated for water. So I hope you can pay attention to these items. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other members of the public who wish to address the council this evening? We're going in size order here.
Thank Governor, eight nine eight near road, taxpayer, homeowner, etc. First issue is item number eight. I tried looking at vision appraisals, and unless I'm doing something wrong, I wasn't able to find this property to actually look at and see if I could relocate it. I did the same thing with the Ridgeberry Road property. I was able to find that as well. So if we could look at vision, I might allow you can't find this property. So we did. I think we need to look further into item eight, maybe send to an ad hoc. What Mrs. Mitchell brought forward was information that I had known awareness of, and it would be a sin for Danbury to lose some of its history and some of the very things that are made of the city that is today. So I'd like to see more investigation on that before we make a surplus. Second one is item number eleven. The pro changes to the water and sewer lines. Absolutely, I think it's a good idea that we look at this and make sure we have accurate readings. But also, I'd like to see the water department look at people who don't have water but pay for sewer. I was, I am one of those people. I found out last week that my neighbor, who has a family of four, has city water, city sewer, pays less in taxes than I do. Just myself and the burden of bill. We don't use the city's utilities as far as water, so we're not burdening the system that way, just the sewer line. So maybe when we look at this metering issue, we also look at the people who are just paying one side of the tax and not the other, and wonder why those that are not using the water are paying more. So I beg you to look at that as well. Last but not least, item number twenty-five. I know some of you will be disappointed when I speak on this one. We have open space. As I spoke in the past on open space, I think it's very unfortunate that the, as the city stood up and took out a sixteen million dollar bond issued to require open space, and then when we have certain parcels, we decide to get rid of them. This thirteen acres is on the other side of town, and we're talking about turning it into basically a mini-shopping center over the year. This, I think, goes against, one of our many goals in the city was was just to bring business downtown and encourage more business downtown. Now we're pushing it out to the outskirts. Second, we're looking at school population overcrowding, and we're looking at maybe the bonding issues and maybe expanding the school system in these areas. Would this land be better used for that end of town where Riveting and other places like that are expanding? They will be putting more burden on the school system, and this might not be a better place for them. Third, watching the ad hoc committee, there was a couple issues that kind of rubbed it the wrong way. First was, we need to rewrite the zoning laws in order for this to happen. We've seen in the past that when we rewrite zoning laws to help businesses conform, they not necessarily conform afterwards. So there's not really a hole down there to make sure that things stay the way they should be. There was flaw in putting a deed restriction on the property. If it's my understanding is correct, there was a deed restriction on the property at the end of Hospital Avenue. That was bulldozed down, and the idea was, well, there was a deed restriction. If you have a problem with it, sue us, someone will take care of it. You know, where does that fall? So these safety nets that were brought up at the ad hoc, I don't see them really being safety nets. I see them being, they sound good, they look like they would be good, but if they're not enforced or if they're not aligned to the standards that they're put, they're kind of useless. So I have problems with both of those ideas. I think the city, yes, we are in a budget shortfall. For many years, I've gotten up here and spoken against some of the bond issues, even though I like some of them. I did, I thought that the expenditure was worth it, and the city should really bear. And I understand that we need to tighten our belts, but we need to make sure that we're not selling ourselves short. If we come back later and decide that we need to use this land for something better, say a school or another thing, where do we go from there? Do we come back and buy property prime somewhere else at a higher rate? So I urge you to look at all these things. I urge you to look at the zoning change that would be required for one person, to look at the idea of the deed restrictions, if they would actually be enforced rather than just be put on there. And then third, look down the road and make sure that we're doing the right thing here. Thank you for your time.
Any other members of the public who wish to address the council this evening? And we'll remind with our regular scheduled meeting, I have a couple of announcements I just want to share with the council. Last week was Joe Cabo's birthday, December forty-nine. All right? Close now. So it's a big five-oh. Sorry, man. I tried to save it. On February ninth, at Western Connecticut, there's a nice tribute performer, Jim Dyer. He's got a really extensive collection of Kennedy, paraphernalia, and just stuff in his political career. It's from four to six. It's informal here at the city. So if the residents are watching, it should be something I think they'll enjoy. On the eleventh, this weekend coming up, is the annual Explorers Awards Dinner. Good events, stop by if you can, council, forty dollars prepaid. You can call seven four three one one five one for more information. The thirteenth, we're closed here because of the president's weekend. Just a reminder to you. The nineteenth, the following Sunday, is the annual chili winter warm-up at the ice arena. That'll be from one to four. It's a good event, a great fundraiser for some of the organizations that benefit the Danbury Westerners, and so get ready for their next season next year. The twentieth, we're closed again for another president's birthday. And the twenty-fifth is the twenty-third Annual Board Foundation Gala at the Amberland, starts at six P.M. There's all the numbers on there. There's also Blue Gold Dinner on March fourth that happens. The council meeting, I think it's the sixth, the next meeting, and you certainly can attend that as well. I believe that Ms. Tysholz also is one of it, just wants to remind the council.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to remind everybody that Sunday, the Danbury Whalers will be playing the Cape Cod Blue Finns, and it will be in benefit of the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society. The tickets are fifteen dollars. They need to be purchased in advance, and portion of the ticket sales will be going to Leukemia Society. They so far have sold thirty-two tickets. They really, really need your help, because they need to sell one hundred thirty-five to get the proper proceeds. Also, if you're unable to attend, please feel free to buy the tickets and donate it to a needy family. You can get in touch with me, and I can put you in touch with them. Tickets need to be ordered in advance. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Your Honor. Yes, Mr. Nap?
Thank you. I'd just also like to announce an event. A week from Saturday is the Danbury Dip for Charity.
Danbury Dip?
The Danbury Ruslan.
Yes.
It's been held now this-
There's no ice this year, council.
There's no ice this year. We have to run in. Myself and Councilman Sadi have done it the last two years.
I did it twice.
The mayor did it twice back in the day, so-
Never again.
We like to, Tom and I like to call it bipartisan stupidity jumping in the cold water. But it is a great event. It raises approximately twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars for the local charities here in Danbury. It begins at one o'clock again on Saturday afternoon, the eighteenth, so.
Is that supposed to be eighteen? Eighteen.
The eighteenth.
That'd be crazy. What time? Because you gotta get there.
One o'clock. If you jump in the water, if you wanna, if you wanna see what's going on, you gotta be there one, because, believe me, we try to get in and get out by-
Right.
One ten, we're done.
We're done. Get there early. Good party, a great fundraiser for Danbury.
The whole event begins at eleven A.M. and runs till about three.
Mr. Hydrol is coming in a seat up.
Well, we'll have to, we'll have to check that out.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Nap. With that, we'll move on with our agenda. We have the next question. Mr. President.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion that we waive the reading of the minutes, as all members had copies and copies on final legislative seats office.
That's right. It was made, seconded by Mr. Perkins. Any discussion for changes, deletions, or corrections for the minutes after these items? Seeing none, I'll try your minds in acceptance. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The opposition motion carries unanimously. Mr. Majority Leader, the consent calendar, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Consent calendar for February seventh, two thousand and twelve, this is follows. Number three, receive the communication that confirmed the appointment of Roberto Perez, Frank Reed, and Francis Ryan, Commission on Persons and Disability, with terms to expire March first, two thousand and fifteen. Number four, receive the communication that confirmed the appointment of Chris Robinson to fill a vacancy on Canwood Lake Authority with a term to expire April one, two thousand and fifteen. Number five, receive the communication that confirmed the appointment of Connie M. Vitetta to fill a vacancy as an alternate member of the Commission on Aging, with a term to expire October first, two thousand and fifteen. Number six, receive the communication that confirmed the appointment of Jeffrey Harold, a service member of the Danbury Museum and Historical Society. Number seven, receive the communication that referred the appointments of the committee to the Recentual Reapportionment dash two thousand and twelve to the City Council Majority Leader and City Council Minority Leader. The recommendations of two members by each party as outlined in City Charter, section two dash four, as well as the designation of the fifth member as chosen by the committee, must be filed with the town clerk no later than February fifteenth, two thousand and twelve. Number sixteen, receive the communication and adopt the resolution for the FEMA Performance Grant for the federal fiscal year two thousand and twelve. This grant will allow the city of Danbury to submit the expenses for personnel and administrative expenditures for the Department of Civil Preparedness. Number seventeen, receive the communication and adopt a resolution concerning the FEMA Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan. This plan provides for eligibility for mitigation grant offers now and in the future where the need arises. Number eighteen, receive the communication and adopt a resolution for an FAA grant to rehabilitate the hazard beacons and the rotating beacon replacement of the lighting control panel in the ATC, as well as the installation of signs and markings on taxiway R. Number twenty-one, receive the report of the Corporation Council and approve the petition of sixty-two Sound Apartments LLC to accept an extension of sixty-two Chestnut Street Extension and related drainage easements. The planning commission and the city engineer have given positive recommendations on the proposed acceptances. Number twenty-two, receive an ad hoc report and adopt the recommendation of the Audit Committee. Number twenty-three, receive the ad hoc report and adopt the recommendations of the Government Entities Committee. Number twenty-six, receive the ad hoc report and adopt the recommendations of the Danbury Railway between Leaks and License Renewal Committee, and that serves the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Majority Leader. What's your pleasure, council? Mr. Nap?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
That's right. It was made, seconded by the legislative agency. Any discussion regarding the consent calendar? Seeing none, I'll try your minds in acceptance. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The opposition motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, item one, please. Before we start reading that, Mr. Scazabala will be recusing himself, so please let the record reflect on Mr. Scazabala as electability much like others. Madam Clerk.
签订 Teamsters Contract. To the city council members, I am pleased to present for you to your ratification, the Bledgerton Barbony Agreement through the city of Danbury and local six seventy-seven International Brotherhood of Police Groups, consisting of public buildings, public works, highway, park, and rec, airport, public utilities, departments. The agreement will cover July first, two thousand and eleven, to July first, two oh fifteen. The agreement was overwhelmingly ratified by the union earlier this month. I like that the agreements are as follows. One, general wage increase of zero percent, and two point two five, two point seven five, and two point seven five. Elimination of the general employees pension plan for all new hires effective seven eleven, seven one eleven, to be replaced by a 401K-style defined contribution plan managed by the city of Danbury. Number three, a pension contribution of one percent effective July first, two thousand and thirteen. The contribution increases to two percent effective July first, two thousand and fourteen, for current employees covered by this agreement. Number four, an expansion of the city's ability to hire part-time employees to reduce the cost of hiring full-time employees. Number five, an elimination of longevity payments for new hired, new employees hired after seven one two oh eleven. Copies of the contract are on file with the Legislative Assistant. I would like to congratulate both the union's leadership and our negotiating team with our outstanding work of bringing these negotiations to a successful conclusion. If you have any questions, please feel free to call the Assistant Corporation Counsel, Diane Rosemar.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. What's your pleasure, council? And Mr. Wetmore?
I'd like to make a motion to receive the communication and receive the contract as presented, as well as authorize the funding for implementation.
That's right. It was made, seconded by Mr. Visconti. Any discussion related to the Teamsters Contract? Mr. Visconti.
Thank you, Your Honor. Through you, to the Director of Personnel, or the possibly the Finance Director. With regard to items two and five in the letter, the effective dates of those changes are retrospective. It goes back to July first of last year. Assume that's correct, and that's not a serious issue.
It's, it's, it's correct, because what happened is is we added another year into the contract, and then we went back and changed the dates, but the Teamsters were fine with it being retrospective.
Now, it's gonna be, my next question is, was that a major issue? Usually, it's a prospective, I know with some of the other contracts, but that was not a major issue.
We haven't hired anybody one time, so it really did impact on it.
Thank you very much.
Any other discussion? Mr. Perkins.
Thank you, Your Honor. Through you, I'm not sure exactly who to address these questions at, but I was just wondering, item number four mentions expansion of the city's ability- item number four, mentions expansion of the city's ability to hire part-time employees to reduce the hiring of full-time employees. Are we going to maintain a ratio of part-time and full-time employees if we do decide anything with this?
One of the biggest challenges we've had with doing that is that at a certain number, we're required to pay into the union's trust fund for health insurance. What this does is it elevates the hours that we can have somebody on the job without having to pay into the trust fund, which gives the Director of Public Works and Duke, it has been a little bit more flexibility, particularly on the weekend hours, which is a challenge for us in terms of overtime and other parts of it. But I don't know if you want to talk a little bit about the operational impact of that. Tony, what's your opinion?
Follow-up. Is there any way to assess dollar value and savings with this contract versus the old one? Is that possible?
In it, we're going to be running actuarial runs, you know, that'll show the impact to say the pension fund, and it will show the impact to when we get to the other contract, the retiree medical obligation that we have. Let's see where we have like ten-minute tapes. Wait till you get the resources. So anyways, so we don't have exact figures. I can tell you that on the pension side alone, overwhelmingly, a lot of you, not just a couple of years, but we're talking twenty, thirty years, you're talking about tens of millions of dollars, because as our population ages out and as our employees retire out, the current employees will be really the last of, you know, the last hopes that allow them to find that plan, given everybody else's financial contributions. It's a tremendous and important step that the city's taking. In that plan, we also are working with the school district, because our custodians and our professionals participate in that. Remember last year, that significant budget impact was, they're up for negotiations in the spring, and David's already working with Kim Thompson, their HR.
One more question, Your Honor, through you. This, from what I can see, doesn't mention anything about reworking the medical and healthcare plans like the other one. I'm kind of getting ahead of myself here, but are there plans to rework medical and health in this one also?
Well, we have a system by which our teachers' employees repurchase their healthcare plan for them with the teachers and national union. They leverage hundreds of thousands of members across the world to be able to get some pretty, you know, effective rates when you compare it to what we have to purchase. So the specifics of the plan, how the plan's constructed, the plan design, is all done by the Teamsters. We just pay a flat fee into the fund as it relates to their healthcare. So that's why you don't see discussion about, you know, co-pays and things like that.
Thank you.
Yes, Miss Sattler.
Thank you, Your Honor. On number one, the general wage increase, zero percent, two-point-two-five, two-point-seven-five, two-point-seven-five. Can you tell me what the impact is, and you would direct the question to, in a dollar amount?
Yeah, I mean, certainly David can maybe guess them a little bit, but the zero is zero, obviously. Next year is the two-point-two-five. Across that, or with that one body of employees, maybe eighty-nine thousand bucks. Yeah, maybe about a hundred. Yeah, I mean, we're talking... About a hundred thousand, hundred-twenty-five thousand.
Thank you.
Every time that goes up. Yeah, absolutely. Yes, you're right. Yeah, that's all right.
That doesn't include their...
It does not include their healthcare benefits. Right. The biggest change in all these negotiations, the most important things we had to do, you could probably push for a bunch of zeros, but you won't get any change to pension. The pension fund, as you know, we've talked about eternally, next year, is, you know, if you look at our contribution this year, it's predicted to be sixteen million dollars. So that's really the focus of the negotiations. And on the other one, it was pension fund and healthcare. Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, then I'll try your minds on... All those neighbors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The opposition. Their motion carries unanimously. Mr. Scazabala? Will they refer to the diets? Madam Clerk, item one, please.
Communication, D.M.A. contract. Dear City Council members, I would please present to you, for your ratification, the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Danbury and U.P.S.U., Local Four Twenty-Fourth, Unit Fourteen, Danbury Municipal Employees Association. The agreement will cover July one, two oh eleven, through July one, two oh fifteen. The agreement was overwhelmingly ratified by the union on January thirtieth, two thousand twelve. Highlights of the agreement are as follows. General, number one, general wage increase of zero percent, two-point-two-five, two-point-seven-five, two-point-seven-five. Number two, elimination of the general employee pension plan for all new hires effective seven-one-twelve, to be replaced by a 401K-style defined contribution plan managed by the City of Danbury. Number three, a pension contribution of one percent effective July first, two thousand thirteen. The contribution increases to two percent effective July first, two oh fourteen, for current employees covered by this agreement. Number four, a reworking of the retiree medical benefit for active employees. Number five, an extension of time for qualifying for the retiree medical benefit from ten years to twenty years for new employees hired after July one, two thousand twelve, and a requirement that the full cost be paid by the prospective retiree should they elect to have medical coverage upon retirement. Number six, a new simplified classification system of jobs that will result in a realignment of wages for incoming employees hired after July first, two thousand twelve. Number seven, an HSA healthcare plan for incoming employees hired after July first, two thousand twelve, with an ability to buy up to a higher-cost plan. Number eight, a restructuring of the healthcare plan for employees that include a higher premium cost share to help mitigate increases to the cost of healthcare benefits. Copies of the contract from a practical legislative assistant. I would like to congratulate both the union's leadership and our negotiating team for their outstanding work to bring these negotiations to a successful conclusion. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact Assistant Corporation Counsel, Diane Rosemar.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. What's your pleasure, counsel? Mr. Herr.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to receive the communication and approve the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Danbury and U.P.S.U., Local Four Twenty-Fourth, Unit Fourteen, Danbury Municipal Employees Association.
Seconded by Mrs. Tysel, discussion relating to this contract. Mr. Levy.
Thank you, Your Honor. I didn't want to let this go without making some comments. In very tough economic times, as we're... Danbury and the country are... We have a global type of correction in our economy, and everybody has to make sacrifices. And I think, Your Honor, you expressed it last night when you talked about foreclosures in Danbury and the hardship many are going through. But at the same time, the union leadership and its membership, along with the negotiating team, are responsible enough to come to a good agreement, one that has minimal impact on current employees, but will save the city of Danbury a lot of money in the long term. And I just wanted to thank the negotiating team, the leadership and the membership of all those responsible unions that came to this conclusion.
Mr. Levy, further discussion, please. Mr. Sattler.
Thank you, Your Honor. Sort of the reverse of the question I asked in the previous communication, just a clarification in this one, everything is prospective, that all the changes are to begin on July first, two thousand twelve, rather than retrospective. Just a brief explanation as to why that's the case here, distinct from the last contract.
During the negotiation process, we agreed to extend the terms of the contract to after the four years, and the union requested that, with that understanding, since we were past January first anyways, that the new changes for perspective for new employees would take place effective July one, two thousand twelve. I can tell you that the city might be doing a lot of hiring until July one, two thousand twelve. That's the best way I can describe it. So we understand that, and that was a request of the union, and we thought that was fair. For the Teamsters, it wasn't such a big issue.
Thank you.
Further discussion about the contract. Seeing none, then I'll try your minds in acceptance. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The opposition. Their motion carries unanimously. Items three through seven, as mentioned, right consent. Madam Clerk, item one, please.
Communication, surplus property sale, Thirteen Main Street, which is the W.I.C. Wood Building.
What's your pleasure, counsel? Mr. Currie?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to accept the communication and refer this to an honor committee to consist of the report of the planning, Director of Public Works, Corporation Council.
And I can reach out, consist of the following: Mr. Knapp in the chairmanship, Mr. Wetmore, and Mr. Shines. Madam Clerk, item nine, please.
Communication, donation to the fire department. Honorable Mayor Fountain, City Council, I request that you accept on behalf of the Fire Department a donation from Bowing River Angling. This donation of three thousand five hundred dollars will be used to acquire specialized rest equipment. Please contact me should you have any questions. Respectfully, Jeff Harold, Fire Chief.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. What's your pleasure, counsel? Mr. Nagerzadeh.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to receive this communication and accept this generous donation in the same token.
Being seconded by... One second. Mr. Cedar, any discussion about this generous donation from Bowing River? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds in acceptance. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or opposed, signify by saying nay. Nice work on this one, chief. And we'll get a letter out to the... Their motion carries unanimously. Okay, Madam Clerk, item ten, please.
Communication, ambulance fund, capital vehicle. To Honorable Mark Fountain, from David St. Leonard, Director of Finance, for the fiscal year two thousand twelve through two thousand thirteen budget. The ambulance fund includes a vehicle purchase. The net proposal from Yankee Fire and Rescue delivered prices one hundred and fifteen thousand, which includes a two thousand and five board ambulance trade-in allowance. This amount includes both the vehicle installation and its associated equipment. The anticipated delivery date is sometime after July two thousand twelve, and requesting that the City Council approve the issuance of the purchase orders in the current fiscal year so that the vehicle and its equipment can be ordered. The City Council is respectfully request to consider this item on their agenda. Please contact me should you have any additional information. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. What's your pleasure, counsel? Mr. Hallis.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would like to make a motion to receive the communication and approve the issuance of the purchase orders in the current fiscal year so that the vehicle and its equipment can be ordered.
Seconded. Most of them made by Mr. Hallis and seconded by Mr. Nagerzadeh. Any discussion about the motion? Mr. Otello.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the Chair, Chief Harold. I have a couple of questions for you. First of all, what's the typical warranty on a unit like this, and how long would you be able to see this in service? Do you have how many years? Always. Warranty and years of service, thank you.
My name is Matthew Casbeck. I'm the Director of Emergency Medical Services, and of course, I work very closely with Fire Chief Harold. Your question was, again, this?
Warranty. Typical life of warranty and the typical amount of time the city has to have this in service.
Okay, the typical years of service is lasting about five to six years. The current ambulance is being replaced in two thousand and five. It currently has ninety-five thousand miles on it. When we turn it in in June, it'll likely have over a hundred thousand miles on it. Typical warranty period is a year on these particular models. We are very confident in these particular ambulances. We've used this particular model for the last fifteen years and have very, you have very good operational practice for the city.
Right. Thank you. Mr. Biscanti?
Thank you, Mr. Biscanti. So, Mr. Casbeck, will this vehicle be similar to the box that you're now using, or is it a different style?
It is the exact same style of ambulance, again, and it has radios. It's very detailed, related to the blue car. We have a number of years of experience with this ambulance company, and are very satisfied with the product.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Currie, and then Mr. Knapp. Got a lot of public safety people out there.
Your Honor, now, the only question I have is, what's the discrepancy in the price? It says one hundred and fifteen thousand in the letter, and then on the net delivery price, it's ninety-eight thousand eight.
Yes, the vehicle encompasses a trade-in as well. The trading value is ninety-eight hundred dollars, I believe, for the trade-in, and also there's some equipment as well, which, Mr. Currie, radios, etc., which would bring the price up to one hundred and fifteen thousand.
Well, it is going to be one hundred and fifteen thousand.
That's correct. That's the actual cost of the ambulance, and there's trade-ins as well.
Mr. Levy.
Through the Chair to the ambulance supervisor. Are these funds that are generated from the ambulance service, or are these the separate
Dave, I'll yield that question to you specifically with the funds for the ambulance.
I want to know whether this came, the funds generated in the ambulance fund?
Yes.
Are they paying for the equipment?
Yes.
So this is ongoing replacement that's built into the cost of operation of the unit?
If you notice in your budget, you'll see a replacement schedule in your budget. This has been planned for the last two years. There's a regular vehicle replacement schedule in your budget. You'll see that in the law. There's going to be a change in your budget. Thank you.
Any other questions for discussion?
Thank you, Your Honor. Through you to this Finance Director. After this purchase, what will be the balance of that ambulance fund? Do you have that figured?
Two-point-five million dollars.
Follow-up. How is that fund replenished? It comes from the ambulance?
Be for service.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds on the purchase of the ambulance. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk? Clerk, item one, please. Madam Clerk.
Communication amendment to Code of Board, this is twenty-one dash forty-four.
What's your pleasure, counsel? Mrs. Tysel.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to refer this to an ad hoc committee consisting of Director of Public Utilities and Corporation Council.
And I, committee, sort of consist of the following: Mrs. Tysel, so through the Chair, Mr. Hadat, and Mr. Otello. Madam Clerk, item twelve, please.
Communication request for sewer fifty Shelter Rock Road.
What's your pleasure, counsel? Mrs. Stanley?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to receive the communication and refer this to City Engineer and Planning Department for a report.
Seeing no objection to the sewer order. Madam Clerk, item thirteen, please.
Communication request for sewer fifty-five, Mill Road.
What's your pleasure, counsel? Mr. Hadat.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to refer this to the City Engineer and Planning Department for a report.
Seeing no objection to the sewer order. Item fourteen, please.
Communication request for sewer ten, Molly Road, AKA thirty-two, Molly Road.
What's your pleasure, counsel? Mrs. Stanley, again.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to receive the communication and refer this to City Engineering and Planning Department.
Seeing no objection to the sewer order. Madam Clerk, item fifteen, please.
Communication right to Drake Eastman, sixty-six, Jane Green.
What's your pleasure, counsel? Mr. Levy.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion to receive the communications and refer this to the Corporation Council, Director of Public Works, and the Planning Commission for a report.
Thank you, Mr. Levy. Seeing no objection to the sewer order. Items sixteen through eighteen are on the side. Madam Clerk, item nineteen.
Nineteen, resolution, extension of property tax phase-in. To Honorable Mark Fountain, City Council, from David St. Leonard, Director of Finance. In May two-a-week, the council elected, due to the special economic circumstances that continue to exist in this country and in this city, to authorize a four-year phase-in of the October first, two oh seven, evaluation property assessment. The council, in May two thousand and ten, by separate resolution reaffirmed the freeze of the two oh nine phase-in rate. phase-in rate for the 2010 year. Now, in January 2012, we must exercise a final, which is a fifth-year phase-in, and as authorized by statute pending the completion of your new reevaluation to come in late 2012. By doing so, we secure a reasonable, rational, and fair tax rate and assessment for residential property owners in a way that is consistent with the law and with sensible economic policy and need at this time. By implementing a final phase-in year, we can provide our constituents with a continuation of a known and a working policy while we prepare for the 2012 full revaluation to come. In accordance therewith, please give consideration to the adoption of the attached resolution. And please feel free to contact the service if you have questions.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. With your pleasure, council. Mr. Cavan.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just kind of like to make a motion to receive the communication and adopt the resolution that will help us secure a reasonable and rational and fair tax rate and assessment for residential property owners in a way that is consistent with the law and with sensible economic policies and needed at this time.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Cavan. Seconded by Mr. Negaesh. Questions regarding item nineteen. Questions regarding item nineteen.
Thank you, Your Honor. Through the Chair to the Director of Finance, reading the resolution that property type in second, whereas he says we know values will be less than the uniform rate of seventy percent but not less than the freeze rate of sixty-two percent. Is there an estimate as to where we think it will fall based on this phase as we pass this?
Well, different property types have different percentages. So, it's very difficult to do that.
And what is the predicate for the different percentages? Is it commercial versus residential?
Yes. We use sixty-two because that's where the residential is right now. The commercial is much higher than that right now, but it's lower than seventy.
And, Your Honor, there's been four categories. Are those that subdivided?
They have commercial, residential, industrial, and apartment.
Apartment. Apartment. And one more follow-up, Your Honor. If we didn't approve this phase-in, what then would be the consequence?
Well, given that this is the final year before our next full rebound, you're going to see swings in tax rates, and that's going to have a pretty significant impact. Not only that, you're going to see a shifting of collective taxes between one asset class to another. And then when we go into the next, the ten, one, twelve rebound, you're going to see it shift back. So, it's going to cause a lot of confusion, a lot of disruption in the tax base, and it's best just to keep it as smoothly level as possible for the tax return. Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Any other discussion about this? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. You know this. Item twenty-one.
Resolution, maturity works, no costing your work program.
With your pleasure, council. Mr. Knapp.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to refer this to an ad hoc with Corporation Counsel, Director of Health, and the Director of Personnel.
And I can reach out, consist of the following. Mr. Taylor, because he's not here, Mr. Curran, and Mr. Nero. Items twenty-one through twenty-three were consent. Madam Clerk, item twenty-four, please.
And I report twenty-twenty task force.
Your Honor, at this time, I'd like to, without objection, waive the reading of the report as all members have copies and copies are on file in the Legislative Assistance Office.
Second order. Seeing no objection, we'll waive the reading of the report. At this time, I'll tender motion regarding item twenty-four. This is Tysel's hands up.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to receive the committee's report and adopt a resolution authorizing funding for a feasibility study not to exceed a hundred thousand dollars.
So, it was made and seconded by Mr. Cavan. Discussion under the second. Mr. Sadi.
Thank you, Your Honor. I used to echo what Councilman Levy and some others have brought attention to the fact of, obviously, we're in some difficult economic times. Hopefully, things are on the way to getting better, but just for the public's benefit and those, most councilpeople were at the meeting, but those who weren't, really, this is a compromise and a merger of different ideas that I think takes the best of what we can do under these circumstances. Some potential expansion of our schools to address overcrowding while giving, as Your Honor has said, stability and certainty to families as to which schools their children will be going to and not splitting up siblings. And I'm glad to see already reading the news times that there are steps going forward with regard to evaluating the properties. The one thing, just to be clear, is that even though there's some information out there that certain schools are the focus of potential expansion, that is going to be, and I think I was clear at the meeting, but going to be dependent on the engineering report and what schools can do to expand it, so that people need to be a little patient and not rely on rumors. And, you know, just want to commend the administration, the council leadership, Councilman Cabo, Visconti, Seaberry, and Knapp who are on this committee. Heard from, you all heard from a lot of constituents. I've heard from a lot of mine, very concerned about this issue, and it's going to take a few years to put in place, but I'm glad to see that it is moving and, you know, really commend everyone, especially the parents for keeping us all on track with putting this on a faster track than it was just a few months ago. Thank you, Your Honor.
Any other discussion about this? Mr. Sheenese.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to, with Director of Finance, since the motion didn't indicate budget line item where it's going to come from, without, I would have to assume it's going to be contingency fund. Do you have a certification that the funds are available?
Yes, that'll be provided to you. You have the funds in contingency. Any other discussion? This is Mr. Cavan.
Thank you, Your Honor. And I too would like to thank Mr. Sadi and Mr. Seaberry, Mr. Knapp, and Mr. Visconti for their work on this committee, myself and the additional members of the council, and the twenty-twenty task force for a very difficult job that has been passed with, and I feel very happy with the item that we're for you tonight, but I really just like to tell everybody, this isn't it. There's more to come, and, you know, it's going to be down the road, will be after, be in November most likely, and I wish this was all we needed, but of course, I hope it will be that, so to be prepared. Will you say fucking machine?
Say it. Call it for a ride. We'll get it. Any other discussion? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, signify by saying nay. I also just want to congratulate the Senate for all its team of engineers. I also worked for Reed, some other folks that helped us. We went through every single big building in the city, counted every single room, met with every single principal, and came up with a common template school form for every single elementary school. There's been some discussion tonight about building more buildings. We avoided a huge cost to having to build another building. We're looking at a thirty-five to forty million dollar proposition. Plus, you got to staff that building, so it's another two and a half, three million dollars a year into the budget. So, in fact, this has been a great compromise. I just want to congratulate Antonio for the hard work he did. It's a really difficult task. Okay. Let's move to item twenty-five.
And I report purchase thirteen acres, Old Ridge Berry Road.
With your pleasure, council. Mr. Sadi.
Your Honor, just insurance is consistent with Robert's rules to Corporation Counsel. Once a communication before, so I can ask a question before taking action, is that direct? Sir, Thomas, did you read? Did you say that again? Once an item is before the council, it can discuss or ask a question prior to actually taking action on that generally.
You tried to a motion?
Correct.
So, we should make motion first.
Okay, now can we move to receive the communication?
Yes, thank you.
I move to receive the communication, Your Honor.
But is it move to receive the communication and refer to public hearing, get a second, and then you can answer.
Received the communication, Your Honor. Refer to public hearing.
Second.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a point of clarification before we send this to a public hearing. In the ad hoc report, there's a mention of potential revenue, tax revenue of one point seven million dollars through the Chair to the Director of Finance. Two questions. One, I presume that's an estimate. And then, secondly, does that include other taxes and fees beyond just real property taxes and fees?
Yes, that, if you recall in the meetings, we were talking about a pretty wide range of numbers, and that is an estimate that does include real personal, real and personal property. It also includes building fees, all the other fees that could be associated with the property of, say, fifty billion dollars or thereabouts.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor. That answered my question, and as statute provises, we'll go to the public hearing.
Any other, this time, I have a motion to second it, refers to public hearing. All in favor, signature by those saying aye. Seeing no objection to the sewer order. Item. Accept. And then, I have a second on my, on reports.
Your Honor, I think a motion at this time, we read the reading of the department reports as all members have copies and copies are on file in the Legislative Assistance Office.
Second. Was made and seconded by Mr. Burke. Any discussion with department reports? I've got some ad hocks I got to get through again tonight, so ask all you want, because I can tell the business. Yes, Cavan.
Thank you, Your Honor. Through the Chair to the Director of the Denver Municipal Airport, Ms. Jesterfey. Thank you, Ms. Jesterfey. Just wanted to ask, to reflect in that, remember the public's question about the tower that was struck by an airplane on the occasion accident back some time ago. Can you assist us in that tower and the beacon on it?
The tower, the beacon was shattered. We can have it removed. Tower had to be inspected. It's a hundred-foot tower. And then, both very, very familiar information from the public up in that area. The, once we've got a crane up here, we need the top of the tower, the lights, and security, then we inspect it.
Can you just stand that for one second? If you could move a little bit closer, you might be able to hear.
And I noticed you're shaking.
And I got a hold. The tower had to be inspected not only by my staff but also by a structural engineer. That took some time. Throw in the storm, Alfred hit at the end of the month. That delayed it even more, and by the time we got our report back, we found that the tower could still stand without being dismantled. The light that sits up there had changed over the course of about fifty years. The new lights are different. They're LED lights. We had to make sure that we had proper illumination under the FAA standards, light compliance standards, and the light had to be ordered. We expect the shipment March seventh on a light, and once the light is received, then we have the on-call electrical contractor for the city standing by. We have the crane operator standing by, and hopefully Mother Higgs is standing by to allow us to go back up there and put the light back on. Not having a light on there does pose a problem for some people. We understand that, but also, we've issued a notice to airmen, to the pilots, to be work the area of the, on the tower. We have two launch tubes given, and now with the global positioning satellite equipment on most airplanes, not all, the coordinates are added into it, and the object is lit up on the panel in certain aircraft. So, we have enough notification out there. We haven't had a problem. We haven't had complaints for a fire public yet. We recognize we'll have complaints from the community, but from an aeronautical standpoint, it's still safer.
Sounds reasonable. Thank you very much.
Mr. Sadi.
Thank you, Your Honor. Through you to Mr. Day with regard to the order report. Very briefly, if I'm correct, there is a regular maintenance schedule and procedures for fire hydrants, and that if a member of the public wishes to, can they contact either your office or the department and ask if a particular fire hydrant is or is out of service that is near their home?
That is correct.
And if I recall, the council may have a better recollection, at one time, there were several hundred fire hydrants that were either problematic or out of service, and that this number now, while not perfect, is a significantly better than several years ago. Is that correct?
That's correct. Before my time, this hydrant maintenance program was initiated, and I understand they're up in the neighborhood of four hundred or so plus. Now, we're around one hundred and fourteen, which is five percent of our hydrants.
And even though there's not a list in your report, if a member of the public wished to, are those identified the ones that are out of service?
Yes. Yeah, we do have a list, and freedom of information requests have been made, and I have distributed that list to people who make that request.
It's a public document, they can request it directly. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sadi. Mr. Burke.
Thank you, Your Honor. Through you, to, uh, to, uh, to, uh, to. Well, actually, I think the chief, we were talking, I believe, last month about having a situation where a lot of those different hydrants were color-coded. Is there any way to look at the color coding and see what's functional and what isn't?
Right, right now, the color coding is signified by the year of testing that the fire department does. The only color of significance to the fire department, and we are aware of, is if there's a black nut, if the nut on the top is painted black, they know it's out of service. But we also distribute that out-of-service hydrant list to the chief, as well as our plan to correct the hydrants.
Okay, good, thanks. I just wanted to make sure that there was some type of system that you all had in place, and the black nut on top is it. Thanks.
Any other questions? Any other questions to, uh, for the department reports? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds of acceptance. The department reports, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Okay, before we adjourn, folks, I got a couple of things to go over, so you can just give me a minute or two. First of all, I want to appoint the Education Budget Committee. I'm going to put Mrs. Stanley in the Chair of that committee for return engagement. Mr. Seaberry, Mr. Scazafaba, Mr. Haddad, and Mr. Visconti. Mrs. Stanley, I'll have a copy of the education budget on Monday. I'd like to forward it to you. Perhaps you may want to convene your committee just to go over the initial request from the board of that due this month, if you want to do that, please. We'll have a line item if you guys can go. I also have some committees that were going to be replacing Mr. Trombetta and Ms. DiVici, which I did not do at the last meeting, so I'm going to, once again, call out the date and the item number and what it is, and then just say who's going to replace her. So, we're going to start, let's see here, December of 2010, we had item fifteen, which was the tax abatement for surviving spouses and police officers and firefighters that had been recommitted. Mr. Knapp was in the Chair of that one, and Ms. DiVici was on that committee. I'm going to replace her with Mr. Haddad, and then also include a Mr. Nero, just as we're reminded. In October of 2010, we had item three, which was building department fees. I think, I think the system finding just blew off. It was working, don't even go there. Don't even. Item three was something called building department fees. Mr. Trombetta was in the Chair. I'll replace him with Mr. Seaberry. That also included Mr. Negaesh and Mr. Sheenese. And then, I think it was, let's see, okay, January of oh nine, we had fire department collection of fees. That was item six. Mr. Trombetta was in the Chair, so we're going to replace him with Mr. Curran. I'll put him in the Chair. Ms. DiVici was on that, so I'll replace her with Mr. Redmore, and then also include a Mr. Visconti. And that also included Mr. Viscanti. And that was all the changes that I'll give you to see. Mr. Cawill. Of course, I'll extend all the rest of the names, please.
Your Honor, thank you. At this time, I just would like to mention Mr. Trombetta and thank him for his eight great years of service to this council and to the city and to his constituents. Charlie was just a great member of his body, and I think everybody loved him. His training was.
He's still there.
Training was second to none, and we will absolutely miss you, Charlie, and we wish you all the best, and we know you're going to stay around, we know you're going to stay involved, and we're all looking forward to that, so I just want to tip my hat and say thank you.
What do you think I could say? To the Dad, I would contain a motion to adjourn. David, Mr. Sadi, seconded by Mr. Seaberry. All in favor, signify as I say aye. Aye. Opposed?